Well, hello, everybody, and welcome. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Marla.
Here.
Nah.
Ted.
Here.
Willis.
Here.
Five present, one absent.
Thank you. And first up, we've got, there's Kyle. Kyle Patterson is here. He's going to share some information on the announcement that we have been certified as a What Works City at the silver level. Welcome, Kyle. Your mics, I don't know if, um...
I got this. I figured it out.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
I just lifted a little bit so that council...
How about now?
Present person can hear me. I'm going to look to Meredith. Can you hear? Great. You're good.
Great. Well, I'm here today, as the mayor mentioned, because as of yesterday, Boise has become certified as a What Works City, uh, which is a really exciting accomplishment for the city and something I think we should all be proud of. Uh, and frankly, is a culmination of a lot of work by a lot of city staff over the last year. Um, you're probably asking, what is What Works City's certification? Uh, well, it's a standard of excellence for data-informed, well-managed local government. I think by achieving certification, it sort of puts us in the highest tier of high-performing local governments and how we use data as an organization, uh, for impact, really. And I, and the graphic on the left side of the slide shows the nine cities that are newly certified this year. And I just include that to show that this is truly an international standard that encompasses all of North, Central, and South America. Um, so why do we do this? Of course, it's always nice to be recognized for the cool work we're doing here in Boise, but that's not really our motivation. Um, we have really ambitious goals as an organization. We know we have to use data effectively to achieve those goals. And this is a really good set of criteria. It represents best practices around doing data. So if we're achieving certification, it's a really good indicator that we're doing a great job in using data as an organization. Um, and it's also a roadmap for progress, right? So it allows us to measure our progress towards goals and becoming data-driven as an organization. We're now at silver certification, but we really hope to get to gold-level certification in the next couple of years. Um, and through the certification process, we get access to a lot of benchmarking data from over a hundred other cities, so we can see how we're doing compared to other cities, which is really helpful as we manage that work. And finally, um, by becoming certified, we get free access to a lot of training, like six- to eight-week online courses for all of our staff, webinars, all sorts of other resources, which is great. Um, the certification standard is made up of forty-two criteria across eight practice areas, they call it. You can see them on this slide. They span everything from how we manage data to how we use data for budgeting, for procurement, all sorts of other things. There's three areas where we performed really well, where we really excelled in the certification, what we, what's called practice area leadership. Uh, the first was leadership and capacity. And to get certified under this, we had to show some really specific, distinct examples of how you all, mayor, city council, city leaders, use data in decision-making. So thank you for your work doing that. Um, we did really well around open data. I think the housing data portal we launched last year and the What Works Cities team was really excited about, not just that we launched that data portal, which provides the public access to data around housing in Boise, but how we did it. We engaged residents in trying to understand what data they wanted to see, what format they wanted to see it in. It really designed around those needs. And then performance and analytics is really about how we use data to set goals as an organization to track progress towards goals and to achieve those goals. So again, What Works Cities was impressed with how we use, uh, data around setting housing goals, climate goals, city tree challenge goals, ten minutes to parks goals. All of those pieces played a big role in that. Um, really quickly, I just want to thank a few folks. Obviously, all of you, thank you for asking staff to show you the data as you're making decisions. That's really helpful in becoming a data-driven organization. I wanted to thank the data services team and IT led by Gray Cammer. They're really doing the unglamorous work that's really important to our functioning as an organization, things like data management, data governance, data security, making data accessible to our analysts. Um, they're never going to get invited to city council to present on the really cool data pipeline they built, but the work they do is really critical in, in our ability to perform as an organization. So thanks to them. Um, thanks to our data analysts across the city who take data and turn it into insights for all of you. They're really important to this work. And then thanks also to Samantha Beck, my colleague, who led efforts to get us certified. Um, it's one thing to meet a set of standards, and it's another thing to be able to prove and document that you meet those standards, and she did a ton of work to show that we're being successful in those fronts. Uh, and so many others, the budget team, the procurement team, um, played a big role in this. So thanks to that crew. Uh, that completes my presentation. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And of course, folks should feel free to take a selfie with our cool new banner if that's here.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, Kyle, congratulations. I love this sort of stuff, um, because I like the application process of being able to check, yes, we do this, no, we don't, or to figure out, like, is this something that we could implement or look forward to in the future? Sometimes when we get these certifications, they give you some, like, low-hanging fruit next steps to examine, and then some, like, bigger things. Did they offer any feedback, or do you have any ideas of, like, areas where you think that we would push a little bit harder to do better, but also achieve those higher levels of certification?
Yeah, one of the practice areas where we're really focused on a number of the standards, I think in the next year, we could make a lot of progress is the data governance piece, having this sort of a data inventory, a data classification scheme. Again, there's a really, like, unglamorous parts of it, but can really unlock a lot of power for us. And so I think we're going to see a lot of progress on that front over the next year. Thank you.
Great. And then one more question. What does results-driven contracting mean? Can you explain that a little bit more?
It's really about how we, um, select contracts and measure performance for contracts to help us make sure we're selecting the best vendors for the job. So how do we bring data into that decision-making when we have, say, a request for proposals and we're selecting somebody? How do we know who the best person is based on data and track their performance for the future?
Perfect. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Kyle, congratulations. Congratulations to the city team. These things don't just happen. They take a lot of work, and it's really remarkable to see all that we've done. Uh, Kyle, thanks to your team for reaching out to city council on the different data projects and gut-checking what, what constituents would want to know and what, you know, folks that are just living in the community but not deep into this work want to know and see. Um, a couple of comments, particularly on results-driven contracting. Sometimes it's called outcome-based contracting, outcome-based partnerships. Uh, in my day job, this is the new frontier, and I think we're going to see a lot more of it. I'm really pleased to see that the city is talking about it. It's a good investment for taxpayers. It makes sure that we get what we pay for, and it incentivizes not only the city, but also the, the vendor to do the best work possible, and that's a win-win for everybody. So two thumbs up. I really think this is where government needs to go.
Thank you.
Um, well, Kyle, I said it before, but I'd love to say it again. Um, thanks to you and the team and everybody that was a part of this. You know, we've often said up here that what gets measured gets managed, and the work that you're doing around data helps us measure and then manage and ultimately make policy decisions, but make sure that we're getting what we're setting out to get. Um, the more we can do this, the better. Really appreciate the work that you did to get us here, but extra appreciate, uh, the desire that you and the team have to make it to the next level, recognize where we have room for improvement, so we can deliver more service, better results at lower costs for our residents. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, and I do want to say to Sam Beck was listed up here. Many of you met Sam. You know, our community benefited from this partnership with the Bloomberg Foundation and the Kennedy School. Um, Sam Beck was a two-year fellow, um, who was sponsored by the Kennedy School. She was a graduate student, um, to no, no cost to the city. She helped us streamline daycare, um, licensing procedures, both saving money and time by about thirty to sixty percent. She worked with you and team on geothermal design sprints, on so many other, um, topic areas of importance to us, um, some of the ARPA work. There's so much work that she did in the last two years, including this work. She's moved on to a full-time job in another city. We loved having her here. She enjoyed her time, um, but ultimately, it was, um, this partnership and the results that you and staff have shown when we work in partnership, um, with the Kennedy School to deliver results that made it possible for her to join us, um, and then made it possible to see so much, um, extra work come out, um, that benefited our residents, um, in the priority areas that we have. So thanks.
Thank you.
And next up, this is the, the main event for this, this afternoon, and we're going to dive into a discussion about the southwest area, about planning in the southwest area, is how I should say it. Um, this is not about, um, a specific application. The McGurtyers are here, welcome. It's good to see you both. Um, but believed after the last discussion on the specific application, that it was very important for this council to have a discussion about all the different considerations, as well as the history, um, behind the annexation or lack of annexation, the decisions made in the southwest. Um, so looking backwards, but then looking forwards at, at what's required, the policy decisions that will need to be made, the service expectations our residents will have, um, to better inform future decisions, as well as what I would propose comes next at some point, a real discussion about, um, growth planning with this council and the policy, um, decisions and financial decisions that will go into that, separate from any application. So today is a look, a deep dive at the region, the southwest planning area, um, and then we will start later on having the, the development-specific work sessions that we also discussed having. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you, Mayor. And can you all hear me? It's fine. Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, House members, I'm Jessica Delak. I'm the deputy planning director of PES, and today I have the pleasure to present this work session on various planning considerations for the southwest planning area that should be taken into account when discussing annexation and investments in this particular area outside of current Boise city limits. As all of you are decision-makers on the priorities and investments of the city of Boise, the considerations for how to grow the city, what and where revenue from taxes and fees are collected, what the associated services are when annexation is approved are multifaceted and nuanced. This council has and will have requests for annexation before them. In the staff presentation today, we'll include many different department representatives to review their priorities and costs, the effect expanding the city's boundaries have on the respective services, as well as what effect expansion of that boundary may have when annexing greenfield, or greenfield or undeveloped land versus an area that is largely built out, as is the southwest case with low-density residential development. For today's agenda, we will largely focus on the long-range planning principles that incorporate the city's priorities for growth, the process laid out by state code to annex land, a timeline of the development within the southwest area of impact. We will review the obstacles to city-initiated annexations, and we'll then bring in members from other city departments to cover service impacts in light of potential annexation scenarios. We will end with some concluding remarks, helping to tie these points together and provide some next steps regarding future city annexation efforts within the city's area of impact. We are hoping today for council to walk away having a policy discussion around annexation and investing in the southwest and provide council with the tools to assess future land use decisions that are aligned with your stated values and to provide an overview of the impacts to existing city services if annexation to occur in the southwest, so that you have a full understanding of the trade-offs. The city of Boise's planning department is charged with the, with developing a vision for growth and a set of implementation strategies. Over the past fifteen years, our team has largely been guided by several key documents, which include Blueprint Boise, our comprehensive plan that seeks out to, that seeks to set out a future land use vision unconstrained by time that prioritizes quality of life, our housing needs analysis, which identifies the urgent need for more abundant housing that is attainable for all cities, but all Boise budgets, the climate action roadmap, which sets out our path to become carbon-neutral by 2050, as well as the transportation action plan that names several key moves to enhance mobility choices. The planning division considers each of these important elements, livability, housing, climate, transportation, and distills them into key planning principles for how we can address challenges today and into the future. Our team synthesizes the decades of planning efforts into the following long-range planning principles. We want to see a variety of housing options across Boise. Our development pattern must be resource-efficient. Boiseans should have mobility options, and particularly the ability to drive less and drive shorter distances. And finally, our development pattern must be one that Boise residents can afford now and into the future with growth paying for itself. In addition, an imperative of the city has been to drive development in areas with existing and planned infrastructure. What is shown on the screen in red, pinks, and greens are the high-intensity land use designations from Blueprint Boise's future land use map and the best-in-class transit corridors from the transportation action plan. This sets out a framework that the city should be focusing its growth within downtown, activity centers, pathway corridors, and best-in-class transit corridors. These are the areas where the city has actively aligned policies and investments to ensure that as we see new development and population growth, we have mechanisms in place to enhance or develop required infrastructure. Another key part of long-range planning set forth by Idaho state law is the concept of the area of city impact, or AOCI, surrounding an existing city boundary. These are areas on the fringe of the city that convey the city's interest in future growth and annexation. Historically, the conclusion of an area of city impact into a future land use map did not denote an expectation of when the city would annex. Instead, it focused on factors such as geography and trade areas to express future intent to be a part of an incorporated city. Shown on the areas, shown on the screen in pink and purple are the areas that are within what is currently considered unincorporated Ada County, but is also within the city of Boise's area of impact. For the remainder of the presentation, we'll be focusing on the city's southwest area of impact, which is circled in red. The mechanisms for how to go about annexing land are also set forth by Idaho state law, and there are generally two types of annexations that can occur. Those that are initiated by a private citizen or developer, and those that are initiated by a city. It's important to describe a key element that will change the thresholds to meet annexation requirements through a city-initiated annexation under a new law taking effect on July 1st that will increase the required consent of the owners in the area from fifty percent of the land area to fifty percent of the land area plus sixty percent of the parcels. By increasing this threshold through Senate Bill 1293, the ability to annex much of the land in the southwest has all but evaporated, especially given the order that it must happen by, and I'll explain that more so in a few slides.
And just to be clear there, do you mean currently developed land in the southwest?
Yes, yeah, the area, the, the southwest in total.
Right, but when you're saying, when you're referring to, um, the impacts of this law, um, is it, is it the, because the land is currently developed and then the interplay of the sixty percent of existing residents plus fifty percent of the landmass?
And then the order that would have to occur by. We would have to begin from the north and work our way. Um, and it's due to another state law that caps the way that the city can collect revenue at eight percent. Um, so we'd have to accomplish this in three, three chunks, and I'll, I'll describe that a little bit. The last piece to review regarding the requirements council must meet to approve annexations are found within the city's development code and establish the findings for a developer-initiated annexation request. These applications must incorporate the Boise sewer planning area, honor the negotiated area of impact agreements, attempt to balance cost of services with anticipated revenues, and promote goals of population balance, contiguous development, and prevent costs due to leapfrog development. Oh, sorry. Okay, the city's investment in the southwest spans over fifty, a fifty-year period, where there have been periods of investment made and attempts at annexation, but with each decade, new obstacles have arisen that have made it more difficult to bring this area into the city limits. Beginning in the nineteen seventies, the area began to transition from what had been either rural or agricultural land and grew to more than six thousand homes, each on their own septic system. Many of these septic systems began to fail, though, and due to groundwater contamination, the county issued a moratorium on new development and requested the city step in to help by providing sewer to failing systems. This is when the area is added to the city's area of impact, but there is no plan to provide any other services or to annex at this time. Later in the nineteen nineties, the moratorium is lifted, but development is still under the county's jurisdiction, while the city begins preparing a sewer master plan for both new and existing development. This relationship of the city investing in sewer infrastructure, but the county, but the county approving development goes back and forth until we hit a point in the nineties, when following a one-million-dollar investment in sewer to assess two large areas with ground contamination due to failing septic, southwest residents are presented with an option to form their own separate sewer district. This proposal is overwhelmingly rejected by southwest residents. This flees the city in the early two thousands to complete numerous sewer extensions, all approved by the county, to bring the decade's investment to ten million dollars and about fifteen to twenty thousand residents serviced by city sewer. In addition, to try to connect the city services being provided through sewer with the physical geography of the area and the related services being provided with the area's tax base, the city initiated a large annexation to bring in the last area that established our present-day boundary at Victory Road. This annexation triggered a number of lawsuits around how consent is determined, set off a series of legislative land use committee meetings with the state, and is really the point at which the challenges for the city to annex the southwest begin to come to light. Also important in this history is the two thousand fourteen update to the city sewer extension policy, which directly tied future extension of city-provided sewer to a requirement to also come through as an annexation. From this point forward, as I'll show in a moment, very few annexations occur, mainly due to requirements around consent, sewer, other city services, and the thresholds that must be met by a city-initiated annexation. Moving ahead to present time, the last large annexation analysis the city conducted for the southwest occurred in two thousand twenty-one, and much of the information pulled together from that now, analysis is included in today's presentation. Also worth mentioning, as it's relevant to today's conversation, is, and is soon to go into effect, are the changes to the state land use planning act that will require cities to renegotiate the areas of city impact with their respective counties. As you can see in this chart, the requirements to establish consent or a legal path for city-initiated annexation and the city sewer extension policy all but stopped annexations from occurring. From nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-nine, the city grew by roughly eleven thousand acres, and again, another ten thousand acres in the early two thousands, but slowed down in the two thousand tens as illegal challenges, sewer policy, and state legislation limit the likely success of any annexation. This map shows the annexations that have occurred since two thousand and fourteen, and they are largely industrial or small residential development on the edge of the city, including the northwest annexation in two thousand and fifteen, development around the Iseman Urban Renewal District in Micron, and the BVA location off of Lake Hazel and Orchard. There are several key legal and fiscal obstacles to any annexation in the southwest that I will dive more deeply into here. The first is the consent to annex requirement changing this year from fifty to sixty percent, which creates an incredibly high threshold to meet for a city-initiated annexation. Also, due to the state changing, the state law changing in two thousand and twenty-one, the city's budget is now capped at the annual eight percent, the annual growth rate, rate. And so this is what I was speaking of, is that annexations would need to occur in at least three different efforts, so to not go over that cap. With the added layer of the path to annexation connected with, connected to the existing city sewer infrastructure and how other city services would come into play, the first area that would need to be brought in of the three is from the north, which is also the area where we have the least amount of consent.
And Jessica, will you please just, um, explain the green versus
Yes.
white on this map?
So the green is where there is current city-provided sewer, and the white is where there is not. And by proxy, we associate consent with city sewer connection, and so we can assume that green is consent and white is not consent. And so the way that consent is determined is finding that, that batch of parcels and owners first to meet the fifty percent of the land area, and with the new law, it's sixty percent of the parcels. And then with the cap at eight percent, getting creative about what would be the three chunks, and there's no way to draw the line to get three pieces that have those thresholds, um, based on how sewer's been provided and the history in general in the area.
Madam Mayor. Jessica, so, um, the green areas that are on sewer today and are shown to provide consent, does that meet our legal requirement here, then? Is that what I'm hearing for that sixty percent?
Yes, so the, uh, consent upon connection to city sewer, it, it really hinges on, was this before two thousand and eight or after two thousand and eight? Before two thousand and eight, if you have received sewer, it's automatically assumed you provided consent. After two thousand and eight, there's a firm, um, consent agreement that's applied to a parcel tag, and so that's a combination of all of those and the best proxy we have for what consent is.
Thank you.
But to be clear, um, while we have, while that counts as consent, the total of that consent does not equal sixty percent. I wasn't sure if you were asking about that. Great.
Based on the two thousand and twenty-one analysis, the top third north section was determined to be at fifty-three percent?
Madam Mayor. Would, would you say that a lot of this green is maybe newer development that signed, written consent when they were, when they were building and connecting to sewer? It just seems like, or is, or is it a pretty good mix of older development?
It's a pretty good mid-mix based on first, the septic failure in the seventies and the eighties, um, a million-dollar investment in the nineties for a key, um, subdivision, and then the ten-million-dollar investment does come in a little bit more from the north and, and from the east, but it's very different phases. And we have, uh, Mike Shepherd with Public Works, too, that can speak to the history of the sewer connections.
Madam Mayor, one more follow-up. Jessica, so if we were looking to annex a portion of this, maybe the upper west, northwest or southwest area, um, and we're saying that there's about fifty-three percent there, we would need to actively go out and pursue getting at least an additional seven percent to re, to reach that sixty percent consent. Is, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, and it would have to be contiguous. It would have to be, um, in recognition next year of the fiscal impact for what can be collected, what services would automatically come into play, uh, the gap between when revenues collected and services are provided. Um, so there are other factors beyond just the sixty percent itself. So.
Okay, thank you.
And at some point, we'll have, um, Eric come in and speak in general about the impact of House Bill three eighty-nine, and like him to come and do that, because you see under the fiscal, new construction and annexation taxes are capped at ninety percent. So we have as a philosophy that growth should pay for itself. Our residents have an expectation that growth pays for itself. The legislature says that growth only pays ninety percent of, of its cost, um, after three eighty-nine. So that has ramifications down the line for our community, for every community, um, particularly in this region. But, uh, I've, I've asked him to prepare at some point in the future to come in and clearly speak to the impacts of these various different bills on our finances.
Yeah, so to summarize the legal and then the fiscal challenges, the consent to annex at sixty percent creates an extremely high threshold. The city budget capped at eight percent annual growth rate would require then multiple efforts to annex the full area, starting from the north, moving south. Uh, the cap of ninety percent, uh, for new construction and annexation taxes lessens the revenue that would, we would collect for provided services. And then on top of that, the area is largely built out, so any redevelopment is not expected to, um, uh, increase the impact fees collected as a revenue source from this area, and then that one-year gap in timing from, uh, the requirement to provide services immediately upon annexation, but the time at which taxes can be collected to pay for those services. So the last annexation analysis the city conducted for the southwest was done in two thousand and twenty-one and evaluated what the service needs would be for this area and the related, the financial impact to the city.
And is this, um, just, is this the entire area? So if we were to, if we ever could annex the whole area, these numbers are based on that whole circle?
Yes, yes, that was exercised in two thousand and twenty-one, and, um, many of these numbers are still the same numbers today, but what we're going to next have our, uh, representatives from each of the departments speak to what's still consistent, what may have changed, and how annexation affects their services, um, whether it's in total or, um, in different pieces. So let's see, the legal path at this time, just to remind everyone, uh, required the consent at fifty percent approval, but the analysis also demonstrated at that time that what costs would be for the city and how priorities would need to be shifted for, uh, annexation in this area, the city wasn't, not able to afford. But also the development pattern and power, nature by which sewer has been extended in this area resulted in significant obstacles to annex the southwest. With the recent changes in the annexation requirements and caps on revenue collection, we're going to have the different city departments that are most affected by annexation come up and describe their priorities and costs related to service levels, how those service levels would be impacted by a city-initiated annexation of the southwest, and what the related impact to service levels would be if those annexations were to occur in a piecemeal or broken-up way, considered leapfrog development, given, given those obstacles today. And next, or first, we'll hear from police.
Good afternoon, ma, mayor and members of council. My name is Tammany Brooks. I'm the deputy chief, and it is my pleasure to speak to you today. And I'd like to start by giving you a brief overview of our current police resources. From a facility standpoint, we have one main police department, the From a facility standpoint, we have one main police department, the headquarters, which is located on Emerald and Maple Grove. We have three substations, five drop-in locations, which are co-located within other city facilities. We have a training facility, and then we have administrative functions that are handled outside of the main police department, and that consists of the crime lab and our property and evidence room. From a staffing perspective, we are measuring our staffing on a per capita matrix, and per capita staffing metrics provide insight to our ability to allocate resources relative to our population size. So with this in mind, the Boise Police Department has 337 sworn police officers right now and 100 professional staff. That means that with the compass population estimate of Boise being 250,000, we have a current per capita staffing rating of 1.3 officers per 1,000 residents. When we look at the average of our benchmark peer cities, their average is 1.8 officers per 1,000, which is an aspirational goal for us. However, a more realistic goal and one that we are trying to achieve is 1.5 officers per 1,000. The impact of the Southwest annexation would require an expansion of services due to the addition of approximately 34,000 residents. This means that we would need approximately 50 additional officers to maintain our current service level with this new population growth. On this slide, you'll see a map of our current policing districts, and this is where it was, it was created based on geographical boundaries, the types of neighborhoods, and the call volume of the calls for service. And if we were to annex, service this annexed area, it would require a change to this map. And then with this many additional residents, the city would creep closer to a population of 300,000, and we understand this to often be a tipping point where cities experience changes in violent crime concentration and property crime patterns, potentially increasing the service level needs and requiring additional investments as well. If it's determined that only certain portions of this area are to be annexed, consideration would need to be given for the geographical size and proximity in the area, as well as additional population to be served. This piecemeal or leapfrog approach may create additional inefficiencies, requiring an additional 10 to 20% consideration in staffing. If a smaller area were to be annexed, for example, it could create, depending upon the population, instead of the 50 additional officers that I spoke of earlier, possibly only 20, but it would depend upon the geographical area, the size and the population to be served. And I can stand for any questions, or are we going to do questions at the end?
Yeah, let's do questions.
Okay.
Let's do questions as you go through.
Chief, thank you. So just kind of a question about the 50 officers needed or the 20 officers needed, depending on the area here. When you determine that, is that the amount of people who are out on patrol in the area? Is that a combination of people on patrol plus the amount of calls that we know that kind of go with an additional area? Like, how do you factor in the 20 or 50? How do you know that that's the amount?
So again, looking at the, the per capita staffing, which is the allocated resources, so that 50 could be a combination of officers, supervisors, managers, it's, it's a combination of all of the staffing needed within the police department to be able to provide policing services to an area of growth and the number of people in that area, in the population added to the city.
So in a situation like this, where we've got an area where there's already some folks living, can we also sort of understand that by how many officers are being required by Ada County to manage that area as well? So I'm trying to figure out, like, since we already have police there, or there's police that are already serving the area, doesn't that, wouldn't that also kind of show us the amount of police officers we could expect if we were to annex it in, or am I thinking about that incorrectly?
I think, I don't think that's a correct way of looking at it, because it's overall, it would be encompassed within the entire city. And so we need to look at our resources, taking on this additional, if, let's say 34,000 people, if we added 1.5 officers per that 34,000 people is where we come up with an additional 50 officers, but that would be included and on top of the rest of the population of the city of Boise.
Okay. I might have a follow-up question, but I'll pass it on to my other council members.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if this is maybe just a request that we could get a copy of that raw data. I'd love to know that what those peer cities are, how many there are, what the mean value is, just kind of look at, look at that kind of stuff. I don't know if that's something we can, we can request.
In terms of the current 337 officers, and I'm, I am drilling down a little bit more on the question that Councilmember Halliburton asked, how many of those 337 are patrol? And how many of those are management?
I don't have the exact numbers. I could tell you there's the police chief, the deputy chief, we have five captains, I believe 15 lieutenants, and then approximately 25 to 27 sergeants, and then the rest are patrol officers, or officers, I should say.
So on an average day in Boise, how many officers are on patrol?
It depends on the time of day. The, the staffing coverage could be anywhere from 20 officers up to, depending upon overlap of shifts, maybe up to, say, 50. And then there's also other assignments aside from just patrol. And so whether they're traffic or school resource officers or working in our community outreach division as well.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Excuse me. Chief Hummel, thank you very much for the presentation. And I mean, we know this area today is having coverage, I believe, through Ada County and maybe a joint effort with also the city of Boise. And would you see that if sometime in the future, if the city was interested in looking at an annexation plan, that there would be some sort of transition plan between the City of Boise Police and Ada County Sheriff's Office?
Thank you for that question. I'm not quite sure what that would look like, but we would communicate with our Ada County Sheriff's partners and find out what, we would need to look through their calls for service and find out what type of call volume they have, and then we obviously would work with their staff to figure out what a transition plan would look like. I don't know exactly what that would be right now, though.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I might just follow up with one more. So I'm, my brain's just not quite wrapping around this. So I'm thinking about, one of the things that we talk about with our police department is that once we hit a certain amount of people in the valley, we can tell by our peer cities that some of the crime behavior changes a little bit, we get some more complicated stuff, and sometimes requires some different levels of staffing. And I understand that, and that makes sense to me. What I have a hard time understanding is it seems like we already have that population in the valley, whether the folks are annexed in or not. So if we have all the folks that are living in this area right now, and Ada County is responding to them, and then all of a sudden Ada County isn't responding to them, if we were to annex them in and we take them on by the city of Boise, it doesn't change the population in the valley, it just kind of changes who's responding to them. So I'm still trying to kind of wrap my head around how this complicates things more for the city Boise Police Department, instead of just running into the same issues but having two different police departments responding to it.
I guess my response to that would be, because this would be an additional area and an additional population that the city of Boise is policing, that's where the change would occur. Obviously, the Ada County Sheriff's deputies who are currently responding to calls for service in that area would be placed in another area and utilized elsewhere throughout the county. But so all those calls for service that are being handled now through the Ada County Sheriff's Department, the Boise Police Department would now be responsible to handle. And so that would be an additional call volume that our officers would be responding to, that they're not responding to currently.
Yep, yeah, makes sense there. And I suppose that if we were looking at annexing an area like this, there's the population you're getting right off the bat, but then there's probably some additional population that some, that gets activated within that ability for additional growth.
Correct, yep.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And I just asked, do we know what Ada County's officer per population is for this area? Do we know? I would assume that maybe our, our standard is, you know, if we were to annex this area, they would be get elevated service, but is that a safe assumption? Do we know what their coverage looks like?
I'm sorry, I don't know what that coverage is, and I don't know if they actually measure it just based on this geographic area. We're able to do so in the city of Boise, because we're just looking at all the calls for service within our boundaries, where Ada County may look at their staffing levels based upon all of the areas that they patrol, which is areas even outside of this annex, proposed annexed area.
Thank you. All right, next up is fire. Mike Bazano, welcome.
So yeah, I am Madam Mayor, council members, good afternoon. I'm not Chief Hummel. I did bring Chief Hummel with me, because we needed somebody good-looking from the fire department. So our numbers luckily are easier than the police's numbers. We have 277 uniform firefighters, 304, excuse me, 304 total employees, and 18 fire stations currently operating. So let's see, as far as our current priorities, currently what we have going on, we have Station 13 in the northwest, our brand-new station, we're redeveloping, basically scraped and rebuilt Station 5. And then we have our 10-year plan for a multi-company station near the Lake Hazel Orchard area. You can see in the next map, we'll, you'll see some of our proposed station locations. As far as staffing goes, currently trying to meet some four-person staffing needs. These are mainly, for now, we're going to be looking to do this just with the outlying stations, so Southwest stations, currently we have like Station 17, Station 14 as our bordering stations out that way. And then also.
And this, I'll just jump in on, just to specify, the four-person station staffing is a policy that was taken up by council, what, a year or so ago?
I believe so, yes.
And it was the external stations first because of the joint calls and the type of calls that those stations tend to receive.
Yeah, especially if it's a one-way out, one-way back. We don't have anybody supporting us from the other side or anywhere adjacent to us. So Station 15 is another one out in East Boise. Then also, we continue to try to keep a 1.5-mile coverage area per station, which should give us a four-minute travel time, a five-minute arrival time, if you account to one minute we're allowed to get our, our bunker gear on. And then currently, in the Southwest, we do have a fire service contract or a joint powers agreement with the Whitney Fire District, so we do have Station 17, Station 14, any, any of our, any of our Boise stations, we are contracted to serve out there. Currently, the two closest stations are Station 17 on South Coal Road and Station 14 on South 5 Mile, which Station 17 just, you know, is the one station that's owned by the Whitney Fire District currently. So as I stated before, you'll see on this map, two proposed station locations. The one that, on the left, is the location at Pearl Jensen and Lake Hazel. That is a proposed Whitney Fire Station location. The circle on the right with the crosshatched area is a proposed approximate site for a Boise Fire Station. So in, in either one of these fire stations, what we are needing in the Southwest is a joint, or not a joint station, but a dual company station that not only has a fire engine but a ladder truck. We, we lack a truck in the south of Boise. And just know that at first, either of these station locations could serve this area until further build out, until call volumes require more, until more houses are built out. But if you were to do, if you were to do both, it would, it would satisfy the 1.5-mile coverage radius, basically all the way across Lake Hazel Road to, to Lake Hazel and Orchard. But again, no one development is driving this, it's the Southwest that needs it, not just, not locale, not, not where I live in Hazelwood Village. I know, I feel the pain out there. And then, just so you know, if there's a point on there talking about loss a significant portion of Whitney contract revenue, if annexed, instead of Whitney taking the money and paying us for the contract for service, then the city would be responsible for trying to figure out how much money to bring in in order to pay for these services. So it wouldn't be a loss, it'd be a change in who manages and, and how you can manage it. That's way above my pay grade. So, lastly, if you want to, what I wanted to just close with is, if we were to, if we were to annex out there, we definitely have to have a new fire station out there, at least one. It's, 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 as you can see on the, the previous maps of how large of an area we have and how little dedicated coverage we have out there, if we're going to annex, we're going to owe what we owe the rest of the citizens of Boise. It's not very easy to do so right now. So what would we owe? We would owe an operational fire station with an engine and a truck company, additional fire prevention personnel, and potentially for expanding into, expanding and creating a fourth battalion so that you have a fourth battalion chief and additional companies. So anyway, I hope I answered most of your questions, but I do stand for any questions you may have.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you so much, really appreciate your service out there. We, you know, looking at the Orchard and Lake Hazel Fire Station, just with current development, no annexation, is it correct that we are planning on trying, trying to get a station there in the next 10 years anyways?
Yes, we are, we're planning on it. And so what we've done, it's in, it's in our 10-year plan, and part of it was, there's the BVA development that is proposed to go in there. Part of the agreement for them to be able to go in there is to actually give us a dedicated site of two to four acres for a fire station, but that's it, the rest is on us in order to, to build and to staff. And building, I can't tell you, building materials prices change every day, but a dual company station with four-person engine and a four-person truck, roughly $4 million to operate a year, just personnel alone.
Awesome, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the impact of annexation probably doesn't require this, that's already.
This is already in the, in the plans and, and in our 10-year plan, yes.
Madam Mayor, you, you may have already said this, and I just missed the number, but when we look at putting in a new station, like one of these, we've got the staffing, we've got the battalion chiefs, do we have a number of, like, it takes this many staff to run a per-station full-time kind of estimate, is it 20 to?
So if we were to do, so if you just did a four-person engine station, you'd have 14, I believe 14 people we have to hire for it, correct? Or roughly 15, I think it's 14 and a half, but 15 people for a single company, so a dual company would double it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Public Works.
Madam Mayor, council members, Mike Shepherd for Boise City Public Works. So our service areas for sewer, Public Works Sewer is a little bit different from other services that are provided by a city, that the system is operated by, under an enterprise fund.
Do we have slides to go with yours?
Oh, sorry.
Great, thanks.
You know, under the enterprise fund, our services are funded through user fees rather than tax, general taxation, and the funds generated from the sewer bills are used to operate, maintain, and replace the sewer system, and collected fees can only be used on water renewal-related items. Expansion of the sewer system related to development is paid for by the owner only. The developer provides all funding to construct the new sewer assets that will serve the project, and once these assets are inspected and accepted, they are turned over to the city. New customers pay a sewer connection fee, and that fee pays for their share of the treatment capacity at the water renewal facility. Connection requirements are administered through codes and policies. City code for new construction and/or a change of use of a prior property requires connection to the city sewer. The Clean Water Act sets minimum requirements for publicly-owned treatment facilities, and the city sewer extension policy requires properties located in the impact area of Beatty County to annex prior to extending or connecting to city sewer. And this slide shows, the green areas are in the Southwest District where sewer is, exists today, and then the lines up there are roads without sewer, and then the open areas are undeveloped at this time.
Any questions on sewer?
Madam Mayor?
So when we're looking at the map here and we see the gray lines that are just the roads without any sewer, there's the cost of putting in the sewer lines. Is there also gonna be additional costs located with tearing up the roads to put in sewer lines? Or is, is there room for those already?
So, um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, the, uh, that would all be included in installing the sewer. Yes, you'd have to tear up the roads, excavate, and then repave the roads after installation.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, um, with that, there's many residents, um, so who aren't on sewer today, so if you did rip up those roads, put the sewer, not only is there a cost to the city, but there'd also be a cost to the residents for connection?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, yes, um, they would have to pay their sewer connection fees, which, um, before a sewer project gets started. However, that was in the old sewer extension policy. Today's sewer extension policy wouldn't allow for that at this time.
Can you clarify that? So if a, if a resident was, um, an established resident was looking to be connected to sewer and a sewer in the city was putting in a sewer line, they would not have a connection fee, is that correct?
Yep. In the city, there would be a connection fee, however, in, in this area.
In this area, okay. So beyond that, I understand. So beyond the connection fee, there'd also be a cost because the resident would also have to pipe from their house out to that sewer line, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, and I, I believe what he's referring to when mentioning this, the sewer policy is that we do not provide sewer to people that are not within the city of Boise. So you have to pay for your connection, but you only have the option to pay for the connection if you are in the city of Boise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Parks, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. Um, so some of the considerations in looking at the southwest area, we talk about our level of service for parks, and we get a lot of questions related to the development of a park and what that level of service is. So just to, it's kind of, uh, a play on words, we use level of service mainly for how we maintain a park. So what level do we maintain a park that is currently built? Um, when we talk about level of, level of service on developing parks, we really look at, uh, the national trends, uh, national standards. But we focus mainly on, uh, our community, on our neighborhoods, um, on, on what the general public is looking for in a particular park. So we take that out in a master planning process to determine, um, what is most important for that particular neighborhood or the community for that park. So when we talk level of service, it's really driven mostly by what our community wants to see. And when we talk about level of service for maintenance, that's determined by how we maintain the park property in perpetuity. Um, our primary funding source, uh, Madam Mayor, council members, which you're aware of, comes from our impact fees. Uh, we do receive some general fund dollars as well and have received a significant amount of general fund dollars in the last several years. Um, but we also receive other opportunities for funding options such as donations, uh, partnerships. Um, we also generate, uh, revenue from some of our, um, park and recreation programming that helps fund some of our park projects as well. But the primary source, our, our capital improvement plan, which predicates what development and what amenities we're adding to parks, is really predicated by, uh, what impact fees we'll be collecting from the different planning areas. And there is a planning area, uh, in southwest Boise. It is the, the city limit where it ends is basically, uh, we have, um, a few park locations, primarily Molin, you're looking at Molinar, Peppermint, um, Pine Grove Parks are in that southwest planning area now. We also, um, use our ten-minute walk initiative to determine where our priority areas are in the city, and that ten-minute walk is driven not just by, um, the geography of where that ten-minute walk is from a park or open space potential, but we also look at economic factors, we look at equity factors. So there's a number of other things that we take into, uh, consideration when we determine where our gaps are. We also use a lot of that, those uh, different, uh, indexes to determine where our programming gaps are on our recreation side as well. So we look for those deserts in our community where we need to offer more programming opportunities for children on our, on our recreation side, based on some of the data that we collect in that ten-minute walk as well. So, just like all the other, uh, construction projects you're seeing in the community, are, we have, we've seen across the board about a forty percent increase since two thousand and nineteen. So clearly, our impact fees that we're collecting, we're not stretching those quite as far as we, uh, were prior to two thousand and nineteen with the escalation of, of the construction costs. Again, as I mentioned, the master plan, we really, I can't emphasize this enough, it's not something that our park team takes out to the community and says, this is what we want to do for your neighborhood or your community park. We really engage the community in, in, uh, in that effort. And we do bring national trends and, uh, uh, national opportunities that are happening across the country and particularly in a lot of our peer cities to the table with our neighborhood to just show some examples of things. But when we go out for master planning process, our neighborhoods are really good at already knowing what they're interested in for their particular park. And so we use that data to create the master plan based upon the budget we have for impact fees from that planning area for that, uh, again, for that particular park. Um, our numbers right now are running about a half million dollars, uh, per acre for a full development of a park. Um, and that is a, is a high number, but that's pretty accurate right now, what we're seeing. And that's just taking a pair, excuse me, taking a piece of bare ground and developing that park fully into completion. So I'll give you an example, we just dedicated a new park today on Gary Lane, uh, our Primrose Park. It's an acre and a half, and it was about one-point-one million for that park. So that's about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars an acre to develop that park from, uh, beginning to end. So some of the things that we'll need to consider when we're looking at, um, annexing southwest, if that was a potential to occur, we do have four park properties that we currently own, um, in that geographic area. Uh, we did, uh, do an analysis on our ten-minute walk, uh, in, in the entire area that is being considered for annexation. I believe there's about thirty thousand total residents in that area, and our ten-minute walk, if we fully developed all four of these parks, would, uh, include about seventy-five hundred residents. And so if the math is correct there, that's about twenty-five percent of the total of thirty thousand that, um, that reside in this area. Our current level of service for the ten-minute walk is a hundred percent. That's where we want to be inside the city limits of Boise. We're currently at about seventy-two percent. So we would, um, almost have to triple the, um, park development in this area in order to at least get it up to the level of service for the thirty thousand residents out there that we would believe they would expect from the two hundred and thirty thousand roughly residents that live within the city limits of Boise. We also have a lot of staff considerations, um, uh, just with these four park sites would, would, uh, parlay into what we anticipate would probably be six full-time employees and another ten to twelve seasonal employees to take care of these four properties. Um, one of the things that we, um, talk a lot about in this presentation and, and in the park side is, is it really is park-heavy. But we also have our recreational programming we need to consider. And so, uh, for example, we have ten school-based community centers located throughout the city limits of Boise. So we would be looking at those kids' city components after school free programming that we do. Currently, inside the city limits, we would need to be, um, offering that programming also, uh, in, in an annexed area. We would also need to look at some of our play camp locations. We have nothing on, in the southwest part of Boise as we focus strictly on the, on the city limits for those programs for our children. So all of that would require additional staffing and also some additional facilities as well. And in the end, we, uh, do not have any maintenance facilities in this part of our community, so we would need to look at how we construct some satellite facilities to take care of, of not only the four parks here that would need to develop, but any other future parks we would need to get to that ten-minute walk uh, service level that we currently, uh, offer our citizens. And I'm happy to answer any questions, Madam Mayor.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor, Doug, thank you very much for the presentation, uh, the five hundred thousand dollars an acre. What's a shocking number. Quick question on impact fees out in the area. We have had a lot of development out there, the skirts on the outside of that area of impact. I'm thinking locale or Saranga, now locale and others. What happened to their impact fees?
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Corliss, we do collect impact fees in any of the development that is, uh, within the annexed part of the city. So we are collecting, will collect impact fees from a locale. Uh, we do have a ten-acre park that is, uh, proposed. Uh, it's the Kristen Coughlin Park in the locale development. Uh, it doesn't mean that the impact fees collected in that development will pay for that park, but that park has already been in our inventory to be, um, to be considered for development, uh, sometime in, after twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, when we anticipate we would have enough funding to be able to do that. Um, all other previous impact fees that have been collected have been collected in areas that are within the city limits, and those have, those dollars have been spent at locations such as Peppermint Park or, um, Molinar Park or Pine Grove, for example.
Madam Mayor, follow-up. So Doug, the impact fees that have already been collected, you mentioned on, uh, other developments in the area. Does that include those from locale and, and, and those areas out there? Have those already been expended?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, um, the current impact fees we're collecting out there have not been expended, and what we're anticipating, we're not spending those until we actually have those four. And right now, the only thing we have that, uh, in our CIP is the Kristen Coughlin Park, um, located inside locale. And so we'll be- Can you hear me? Okay. Um, so right now, our, our analysis is, is, since that really is the only real heavy development that's occurring that's generating the impact fees for us out there, we're, we are anticipating that those fees would be used for that park. But that really is a decision by the Impact Fee Advisory Committee and, and you as a, uh, city council to determine that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. So on, just to follow up on that, so when we look at locale, Coughlin Park site, you're only getting impact fees as things are developed. So for locale, you can only develop four hundred homes before, until a fire station has to be built and the rest of the, the homes can be built. So you're not gonna be collecting any more impact fees unless those other homes get built, correct? So it's, there is a delay in the way the system is built here that the growth pays for itself at some point after it's already grown.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Morales, absolutely correct. And we have, our finance team does a fabulous job of working closely with our PDS team and looking at those permits, looking at what's coming down the line. And then we try to, the best we can to determine what funding is going to be available and what years that's going to be available and then forecast that. But at the end of the day, it is, uh, it is more of a science, and if the money isn't there, the money isn't there. And then it becomes a general fund issue. Do we, do we use general fund to do it and not, uh, impact fees to pay for the growth that is occurring?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I see Jessica, so tells me we're doing libraries next.
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Jessica Dore. I'm the director of the Boise Public Library. Uh, according to, by Idaho State Code, there are two ways, uh, a tax-supported public library can be provided, um, to the public. One is for the city, uh, to create and run a public library. So this is the, uh, Boise Public Library, you know. Uh, our Department of the City of Boise, funded through the general fund. Uh, the other way that a library can be created is through a library district. So Idaho Code allows a library district to be created, and then the board has authority to tax, uh, property owners in that area to provide library services. So southwest Boise has two, uh, library locations of the Ada County Free Library District that provide services in that area. Um, so you can see this on the map, there's the Victory Branch and the Lake Hazel Branch. Uh, these libraries are funded through local property taxes and are governed by five elected Board of Trustees members. Uh, to go, to build on Jessica's historical, um, presentation from earlier, since nineteen ninety-four, the Boise Public Library has reimbursed Ada County Free Library District for revenue lost due to previous annexation of previously unincorporated county land. And so by agreement, uh, we provide a payment each year of five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to Ada County, um, to the Ada County Free Library District, and that is for reciprocal borrowing privileges for all Boise residents at the district's, uh, four library locations. So Victory, Lake Hazel, Hidden Springs, and Stars. And we anticipate, uh, that any potential annexation further into southwest would result in the uh, library board of the Ada District Library renegotiating with us, uh, or requesting to renegotiate that agreement and that payment amount. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Madam Mayor. So if there was annexation out there and then it looks like one of those libraries is surrounded by city Boise land, are there situations where the city of Boise, where the district dissolves the library and the city of Boise absorbs it, or does it stay in the district?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, I honestly don't know what would happen in that. It would really need to be a discussion between the two library boards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Ree with transportation.
Way taller than I am, okay. Okay, Madam Mayor, um, council members, my name is Bree Brush. I work on transportation policy in the mayor's office. So I'll be providing an overview today of the existing and planned transportation network in the southwest. I'll start by reviewing some of the primary planning documents utilized by ACHD that exist for the southwest, then I'll review some of those main corridors that people think about in that context. And I also have folks here from ACHD and VRT in case I need to phone a friend. So Ada County Highway District has three main planning documents to support the planning of our arterial network. That's those larger roads that serve as major through streets between different parts of town. And each of those plans is informed by our own city comprehensive plans, Blueprint Boise Transportation Action Plan, even our pathways plan. So those are all put together into ACHD's documents listed here on the right. So you have the master street map that establishes a planned number of lanes based on traffic volume and surrounding land use. It's a tool that helps ACHD determine where they might need to ask for right-of-way through development and helps them plan in the long run, but it has no timeframe associated with it. It's not a five or twenty-year plan, it's just that future build-out. Um, the CIP, however, is a twenty-year plan, and that outlines how impact fees will be utilized and applied to capital projects. Most of the roadway projects in the southwest, including the ones I'll talk about later, are in the CIP. We talked a few months ago about the integrated five-year work plan with you, but it's important to know that the projects in the integrated five-year work plan are in the next five years, and the first two years of that plan are tied directly to ACHD's budget. When projects get put into this document, they are allocated funding for design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction, with each of those phases taking about a year. Or sometimes you might only get funding associated for design, and then construction will go out beyond the five-year, and it'll be in the next, next round. As I said, the CIP is built using impact fees, and ACHD can levy impact fees similar to how we do with some distinct differences. There is one service area across all of Ada County, so that means when impact fees are collected on a project, they can be applied to a project that might be in another city. So impact fees rendered to Boise might go to a project that's next in the CIP that happens to be in Kuna or Star, or vice versa. If Star has a major development and there's a city of Boise project next up in the CIP, we'll go in and collect those, or the projects will be allocated to those. Impact fee eligible costs include new travel lanes, right-of-way acquisition, storm drain facilities, and some of the other items listed up here. Impact fee ineligible costs are reconstructing the existing travel lanes, bike lanes, sidewalks, landscaping, irrigation facilities. So when you, um, look at the CIP, you see uh, the projects listed out, what portion of that project will be impact fee eligible, and then you have an estimate for the costs that will not be impact fee eligible because, um, ACHD will have to identify a different funding source for those, whether it's property tax, sales tax, or their vehicle registration fee revenue.
So to, to make that real, does that mean, let's say, there's a two-lane road now that becomes, needs to become four lanes? That means when they do it, they've gotta do all four, but two of the lane costs can be paid for by impact fees, and then the rest of the cost for the other half of the project has to be covered with their general fund dollars or other sources?
Madam Mayor, yes, that's correct. It's really remarkable how each element of the roadway has to be parsed out, um, in accordance to what is impact fee eligible and what is not. Next, looking at a few of those key corridors in the southwest, the north-south ones that will be most familiar to you are Five Mile, Maple Grove, and Coal. The roads in this area are different than what you might see in the rest of the city, not just because they're mostly between- The roads in this area are different than what you might see in the rest of the city, not just because they're mostly between two and three lanes, but because there is inconsistent sidewalk and bike infrastructure across all major corridors in the Southwest. There are varying numbers of lanes on these segments now with Maple Grove being the furthest along in its roadway improvements. Uh, Maple Grove will be the first to be five lanes all the way through, but I would note that this is something the city challenged between Victory and Amity, knowing that five-lane arterials tend to enable faster speeds. So you really have to work hard to incorporate design elements like medians and detached pathways that mitigate potential speeding and separate uses for safety. For these corridors, Maple Grove is the only one that has widening and bike facilities planned in the next five years. We do not have any requests, um, on Coal or Five Mile outside of city limits on the city's priority list that we give to ACHD each year, primarily because we have such need within city limits that we prioritize those locations first. The project, um, shown here has a lot more history. So this will be an oversimplified summary of the recent history on this, which came to a head in 2023 when we could not determine who should pay for the landfill remediation that's associated with an old landfill site on this, um, corridor. The landfill remediation is estimated somewhere between three and four million before the roadway project can even begin. Scans of the grants landscape at that time didn't reveal any promising solutions. So to move this forward, this project forward, we will have to figure out who and how this remediation will be paid for. Um, on Lake Hazel, talking about Lake Hazel in Southwest, there are really two different areas people refer to. And that's the portion, um, one portion between Cloverdale to Orchard and then the second portion between Orchard to Eisenman. The portion from Cloverdale to Orchard is largely two to three lanes with that right-of-way preservation for five lanes. So that means if an active development comes in on Lake Hazel, um, they will see that ACHD is looking for a certain amount of feet of right-of-way to preserve. If there are older homes that already exist on that corridor, when Lake Hazel gets closer to being widened, you'll see ACHD go out and begin an active right-of-way acquisition process and try to work with that property owner to, to minimize impacts. The other portion that is often referenced in the Southwest is an entirely new road extending off of Orchard to Eisenman. The rough alignment is what's shown here on the screen. It is in the CIP, but it's not in our five-year priority list. And it's expected to be somewhere between two and five lanes. And a basic estimate in the CIP, including some cost escalation, would be around 30 million. Does anybody have any questions on roadways before I shift to transit?
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if something's not in our, uh, in our five-year plan for the city, but it's on the CIP, is there a date that would, might be expected for them to get around to that? Or does it not make the cut since it's not in our five-year?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, it will still have a date associated with it for when the need is triggered, when it exceeds that volume, when it exceeds, um, the existing conditions that it can handle. But it's hard to say because of the cost of certain projects, how and where it'll get prioritized. If there are other CIP projects in the budget, you can only do so many at a time, just given the scale.
So I think maybe what I'm hearing you say is that it would likely be triggered or it'd become a higher priority, even if it wasn't on the cities, if there was, and a level of traffic that would call for it.
I'm going to ask Christie Insulment, or Christie Little to come up here, if, if you wouldn't mind, Christie.
Thank you.
Good evening, Christie Little, Development Services Manager with ACHD. Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, um, I think the answer to your question is our capital improvements plan is a 20-year plan. And we derive that needs list from the compass model. And so it is not a programming document. So we do, if you open up the CIP today, we do have projects in a five, 10 and 20-year plan, only because we have to, by statute, the CIP has to show that it's balanced. But, uh, the projects in the CIP, um, at, just because one of those roadways goes over with a level of service or a particular need, um, that's not going to trigger it moving up in our system any faster. We really do rely on the, our partner agencies and their prioritization request list. So there are, um, many projects in our CIP today, um, that show maybe in the 15 to 20-year range, that 10 years ago, we're in the 15 to 20-year range. So it is not a programming document.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. See if I can make this question make sense. So as far as sort of our, our long-range planning and our visions when we're looking at compass and traffic projections in the future, is this, do we have a time when we think that this area is going to start to fail? Speaking towards the Lake Hazel extension, is the, is the area that the Lake Hazel extension would benefit, is it already getting close to failure as far as the level of service goes?
Madam President, President, um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, the, the data that we derive from the compass model shows the need. So all we know is we have this.
Currently.
The 20-year window. So what is the need for Lake Hazel in the next 20 years? And that's, that's how we derive the list for the CIP.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of, I think, continuing on with that to make sure I have an understanding is I know we, Bree had mentioned prioritizing roadways with, that are within the city limits. Um, and I continue to think about Coal Road, um, because, you know, the, um, west side of the Coal Road, many of that is not within the city limits, but the new developments are on that east side of there. And I, I believe the last time there has been a road study out there showed that the need was already, is there today? Is that correct for Coal, from Victory to Lake Hazel?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, um, if I recall correctly, there is a need today. But again, um, that is one factor when we look at level of service as we're, um, developing our Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. Um, the level of service is just one component. We also heavily weigh our partner agencies along with other safety requirements. And Christie and someone could keep naming all of the factors off for me, but that's just one small component.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, this is probably a good question for Christie. I think as we're talking about Southwest annexation, you know, there's not a lot of property that could be developed and built out with, with a lot, a lot of homes. However, just outside of that area impact, there is a lot of land that could be developed. And we're seeing that with some, with developments in both neighboring cities to the south recently, thousands of homes. So if we look at these, as we're talking about transportation, these rows within city limits, the expectation would be that the impact is going to continue to grow, whether those homes are, are built or infill in our area. Maybe you have any thoughts kind of on, are there concerns about, about that growth that are actually outside of this that we don't have control over?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, again, our CIP utilizes the compass data, right? So as the highway district, we're looking at the roadway system. And that's what statute requires us to do for our CIP is to look at the roadway system. And so if there's development happening in Kuna, that growth should be accounted for in the compass model. And we're capturing all of that regardless of which city it's in.
Thank you. Shifting gears a little bit to talk about transit, as you're all familiar with Valley Regional Transit is our transit provider. They are funded voluntarily by partners throughout the region and they will go out and solicit those funds on an annual basis for their budget. We have a commitment of 5% of our property tax receipt, so we can try to build a system in Boise that meets population growth. But there are other cities and the county that contribute to routes if they are through our area of impact or if they travel outside of Boise. You can see some of the main, um, budget categories for VRT up here on the screen. We have a regional overhead, which everyone contributes, uh, an amount to. Service, those cities or entities that operate service contribute their proportionate share to that. Ours is around seven million. And then there are capital costs associated with procurement of new buses, bike, or shelters, bike racks, things like that, that would, um, support a bus stop. And when we think about transit planning, we direct investments first to those corridors that are likely to have the highest ridership, either where there's a denser population or there are jobs that can facilitate easy access to or educational institutions. And then that next category would be looking at our major activity centers. And those three main categories are where we have our service today. So the service we have in the Southwest area in general stops at Victory and serves the Boise School District at an hourly frequency. And then there's another route on Overland and Coal, um, near Walmart that has a 30-minute peak frequency and 60-minute off-peak. Looking at the elements that influence operating costs, that's frequency primarily. So whether your bus is going to come every 15 minutes, 30 minutes or hourly, trying to move away from those hourly routes, knowing that that's not creating a system that's entirely reliable and convenient for folks to be able to make a choice to take every day. And then hours of operation are another, um, key element that influences those operating costs. This will also determine how much capital you need, how many buses you need to serve a route. If it's coming every 15 or 30 minutes, you might need a couple buses to maintain that level of service. And then costs are shared, of course, between all the funding partners. Like I said, if it goes through another city or if it goes through the area of impact, the county might chip in a piece to pay for that. Um, and then the cost to run a route can really range based on frequency it runs. Our, we have 18 routes, we're contributing about $7 million to operational costs. So our average route's somewhere around 400, 450,000, some are more, some are less. And then the average electric vehicle could be around 800,000 to a million. So that's the kind of cost we'd be looking at to extend service beyond Victory. I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Bree? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, uh, I'm Mike Schrak. I work in finance in the Budget Office. And when we've done annexation analysis in recent years, I have been doing, uh, much of that work. And Jessica referenced the 2021 annexation analysis. And that's, we have some numbers from here to give you a sense of the, the, the cost, the order of magnitude of, of what would be involved with annexation of the Southwest area. As you heard, it would be difficult from a property tax standpoint. Uh, we could no longer do one large annexation. It would be, need to be split up over three separate years at least, uh, to avoid going over the property tax limit. So difficulty there and then the cost would be very expensive just getting services up to what they are in the rest of the city. So when we did the analysis in 2021 and brought it back into current day dollars, doing what, again, you've maybe heard us use the term net present value, putting it in, in $2021, it was, uh, almost $100 million. Now we estimate it to be $100 million or more, you know, a negative figure, meaning costs are much higher than, than revenues over a time period. Uh, inflation has been higher in recent years than we anticipated, uh, just three years ago. So a lot of that is just capital investment needed. And that model has over $70 million of capital, uh, in it. And one of the issues here you've heard is just the area is largely built out. So there's really limited impact fees. If you start with bare ground, it's undeveloped. As you develop it, you roll out the services, you get the impact fees. We do have to front some of the capital costs, that question came up, uh, until the impact fees are there. That's more just a timing issue. But here, looking forward, there would be limited impact fees to build a lot of capital. So some large capital outlays, when we model this and look at what we would need and try to put a dollar figure on it, uh, a new fire station for the Southwest area, a new police station, four parks, uh, potentially even more, we heard Doug mention. We expect there would be the need for a city library there that the, uh, the county library would, would look for us to, to put in library and, and not have them provide that service anymore. Uh, a fire engine for, for the, the fire station, police vehicles, mowers and other things, of course. And then also, interestingly, just hundreds of streetlights. A developer may put in a few streetlights and the city comes in, the, the levels of services, we have more streetlights. So that is $4 million or more over a 20-year period is what we modeled. So very large, uh, dollars there that the city would be, uh, needing to spend if it, if it wanted to get the service levels up. So how we might look at approaching this is we would look to rework the city capital plan in a very large way to focus most of our capital resources into that Southwest area for perhaps a decade. A lot of dollars. And so that's what you would need to do with our resources if you wanted to, to get those, you know, capital investments made and, and, uh, increase those service levels. So we would look at all but the most critical capital needs in the existing city may have to go on hold, uh, including repairs and maintenance and a lot of things that you will be hearing about in our budget, you know, pools and, and other things. So a very large undertaking and a lot of costs that would need to be directed elsewhere if we did want to annex and bring the Southwest area standards up to what they're in the rest of the city. That's my only slide. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor, I want to make sure that we're clear. We've talked a lot about the expenses. What would be the increase in the property value that would come to the city in terms of new revenue?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Wilt, yes, we do model in the, uh, uh, the property tax. And that would come in as annexation property value. And again, we'd have to do it in chunks because we can't go over 3%. So, uh, that, like, new construction would come in at 90% now instead of 100%, but there would be a lot of value there that would come in. Uh, we also would have some impact fees and some new development that would come in over time. But it's just not anywhere near enough to handle the costs when you consider inflation and other things. But yes, we do have.
I, so I have a question, Mike. Is that $100 million, negative $100 million up there, revenue minus expenses?
Yes, that's a way of looking at it today, that it's a negative $100 million, meaning that's how much more, more expense and capital investment you have than, than revenues. And a very large chunk of that is capital. But yes, it's, it's, it's severe.
Madam Mayor, um, that, that didn't answer my question.
Right.
My question is, is how much revenue? You've, you've given us, like, if this is the Cadillac version of what the city would offer, but what I haven't gotten is how much tax dollars will we get if we annex?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, I would have to look in the model to see what the, the property value is we would bring in our annexation.
Well, I think you have it because you say there's $100 million that we're lacking. So there, what's the, what's the number that takes up $100 million?
The, the property value, I would, uh, I just don't have the number in front of me, I'm sorry. We, we could follow up and, and get that information with, with some of the property value added. But, uh, again, it's just with the, the timing of when that revenue comes in and we only get part of it, uh, it's not enough to cover the, the cost of the services we project.
Well, and Mike, I'd ask that you get those numbers because that is, that's the math problem. So you started with the inputs that got to the answer. And so just share that with council in my office would be appreciated. But I do want to pick up on that Cadillac comment because, um, what our staff is doing and looking at this and determining whether or not as a city we can afford this is looking at existing level of service. So we do provide great service for our residents. There's an expectation and a requirement that we continue to provide that to new residents. And so, yeah, you're right, if we consider this Cadillac and we want to sacrifice the level of service ultimately to make that number even, then, then I don't know what we'd, what you'd call our existing, uh, the future services in the city of Boise.
And Madam Mayor, with all due respect, I think there's lots of areas of the city that want some of the things that were described here that we're waiting on and that will come over time. What I see here is a package where everybody gets everything all at once.
Oh, I see what you mean. Well, and in these presentations, it's an outline of what we'd have to do over time. By law, we're required to do it immediately. The reality is we can't, which is why we look at over 20 years if we were to provide, like, space out what we're supposed to provide, um, what the deficit is. But I can tell you, like, I, we, I think we all hear from so many residents that when they're annexed, you know, they expect it all right-of-way. And we're still working in those areas that we have annexed to provide, um, what we intend to provide, just like we opened Promos today. Station 13 is under construction just for the Northwest that was part of this presentation.
Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you very much for the information here. And, um, I have a question. So if we don't annex in today, um, and we heard of, um, all the reasons why, there's lots of costs and lots of challenges. What do you think the cost would be in 10 years when we take a look at this?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, if our projections are correct as far as inflation and what things cost, it would likely be. it would likely be a similar, similar realm. But it's still just the mismatch of what we expect to collect versus what, what the costs are. And costs have gone up and revenues have gone down. So we just, we don't see a way where that would become more affordable. In theory, you could spread things out a long, long ways, and I think that's what we've done in the city, like with Primrose, you know, just being open today about almost 10 years after, after that annexation. So we, we don't see that. It would, it would change. It's just you have an area that is built out, and you, you would need to add services, and you just don't have the impact fees and other revenues to come in to help support what you need to, to put in for services.
So I guess what I'm getting at is we, we don't see a path forward at this point that's going to make it any costlier in the future if we continue to not tackle the problem, right, for the annexation. So our costs, so I guess the question is to you is really, we don't see where costs are going to continue to go down. This is just going to continue to get more and more expensive as we continue on.
Over time, our, some of our revenues grow and, and our expenses certainly grow, but we, we don't see it getting, letting, getting less expensive, no, where we're going to somehow be able to find the money. Again, revenues have been cut and expenses in the last few years have gone up quite a bit.
And this is similar, when I was on council, we looked at the, and this isn't to say that, this is looking at the whole Southwest planning area. This isn't to say that a specific development built to Boise standards can't be done. But this is looking at the existing development, and when I was on council, we looked at this several times, which is why I thought it was important to bring back so that people have context. The city has found time and time again that, from a cost perspective, you have to go in eyes wide open if we were to choose to annex existing development in Southwest. And given legislative changes with the 8% cap, means we can't do it all at once. 90% versus a true cost of growth hits that further. And so, you know, part of this presentation was demonstrating that over the years, the city has gone multiple times to look at this area, and there have been hurdles to it.
Yeah, lots of challenges. Thank you.
You know, Madam Mayor, there's a Venn diagram that I like that I want to share. Got three bubbles. One of them says, I want stable services. The other says, I want low density. The other one says, I want low taxes. And when they intersect, does not exist. And I think, you know, I really appreciate all of the data that was brought before us today and all the work that's going into showing us, you know, some of the issues, some of the big questions that we have here, where we have an area that was developed in a certain way, where we have city governments hamstrung in a certain way on tax, on taxes. And then we have a standard for services that our residents really appreciate. It's a great city. And how, how those, how those things, how we're struggling. So I just want to thank everyone that presented today and, and you as well for all the, the work that you're putting in as we're kind of struggling with this, the Venn diagram, these, these constraints we have and these desires that we have.
Anything further for Mike? All right, I think Jess is coming back up.
I'm going to wrap us up here. So while we've covered a lot of information today, I wanted to summarize four key points that demonstrate how the city's planning priorities. The history of the Southwest, the fiscal and legal challenges to annexing the Southwest, the cost in providing city services in the Southwest, and whether it's in total or through leapfrog development aligned with council's stated priorities. First, the city of Boise land use decisions strongly support efficient and responsible growth, encouraging infill, equitable city services, strong fiscal health, and reduced vehicle miles traveled. Second, as described, described quickly over a 50-year period, the development pattern of the Southwest has been piecemeal, resulting in a development pattern that is difficult to provide efficient and affordable services for. Third, when you consider the unannexed land within the Southwest, there are significant legal, fiscal, and service obstacles that make it very difficult to find a path for a city-initiated annexation that is the type of growth that we can't afford. And lastly, new development in the Southwest will require service investments without the ability to annex the surrounding land, creating a leapfrog development condition that will require a dramatic shift in city priorities to be able to service. We have the rest of the work session to revisit any of the material covered today in the presentation, and we're all available for questions.
Any further questions or follow-up for anybody, any part of the team that presented today?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this isn't necessarily a question, and I just want to say thanks for the team, for all the work that's been happening and discussion. I'm actually really excited to see this topic come up because we were spending time talking about the Southwest planning area. And, you know, when we talk about it, we're talking about potentially for growth and growth playing, paying for itself. But really, what we're taking a look at is this area of impact that has largely been developed. And, and it's been within the area of impact, I believe, since the early 1980s. Annexation and subsequent growth presents a lot of challenges, entailing initial expenses, ongoing financial commitments, and residents may oppose annexation, you know, due to taxes and other regulatory changes. And balancing these complexities necessitates planning and continuing engagement with multiple stakeholders like ACHD and the county and police and fire and library and our community residents. And I would like to propose a consideration for a strategic committee that's going to take a look at these challenges and work and be a, a part of these stakeholders to formulate a comprehensive development plan out there for Southwest Boise. Because as you mentioned, we keep bringing this up, it becomes an issue, we say it's too costly, and it dies down. I, I think there is a pathway, I'm not saying it's annexation, but I think we need to have a plan, whether we say it's never going to be annexed, part of it's going to be annexed over time. What I'd like to see is the city consider working with the stakeholder group and a committee to look at how and what are we going to do with our partners in this area in Southwest Boise. And I'd also like to take a moment to consider that this area is not just an area. These are people in that area that have a Boise, they, their city that they live in says Boise, and we need to take a look at them. They, they work in Boise and they recreate in Boise, and I think the least we can do is to look at creating some sort of long-range plan for the area. Thank you.
Get that feedback. Council President Protem's hand is raised.
Hello, Madam Mayor, thank you. I think that this has been really helpful, so I appreciate all the staff work that went into bringing this information to us. And I would like to ask staff, I know we, we haven't spoke, we, we didn't include any specific project plan in this conversation, but with all of this new information, I would love to ask staff to work with the Murio Farms applicant to schedule a joint work session on the, on that specific plan development. And also, I would love to ask staff, we've talked about this tangentially, I think it's House Bill 389, but I'd love to ask staff to come back before us in a work session on the impact of the recent legislative changes as it relates to annexation.
All right, that's noted. I would add to, if it's okay, 389 was property tax-related, and then I don't know the bill number that was annexation-related that goes into effect, I think, July 1st. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yeah.
Do you want the annexation one, or you want both of them discussed?
I think both would be helpful, just any recent legislative changes that have directed impacts on the annexation.
Okay. Anything further? All right, staff has noted the request. We'll get both of those things scheduled. I don't know if they'll end up being on the same day or separate days. We'll, we'll work with the applicant too to make sure that, that the work session with Murio Farms works for everybody involved. I appreciate the discussion. One thing I'm going to ask staff to come back with in the discussion around the annexation piece is some visuals of when you talk about dividing in thirds, this area, because I'm going to pick up on, I asked staff to pick up on some of Councilmember Corliss's requests, and that is that we need a work session on options for this area in the long run, so a follow-up on that post. I, I would actually separate it from the Murio discussion, so post the request from Councilmember Sted, post Murio, at some point in the future, we've got to come back with a longer-term discussion on the next steps in the Southwest. And in that, or perhaps as an example, in a mayor's request related to the property tax piece, I'd like some visuals to show when you're talking about thirds, what you mean, to make it a little bit more real for us from the financial and vote perspective to get to that 60% and the cap of 8% growth in the existing area, separate from the Murio discussion that we'll have first.
Okay, we can do that.
All right, and with that, we'll break until 6 o'clock.